With that, I would like to let Secretary Bevan know that we have a quorum. And this evening, I'd like to ask Councilman Stan Donaldson to give the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for another opportunity, Father, to serve the citizens of Montgomery. We thank you, Lord, that your wisdom and knowledge help guide us, Father, in the direction we need to go and do what's best for the city. We thank you for this, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance to the United States, five?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas, five?
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right. I have one speaker form. Are there other speaker forms this evening? The students, are you speaking this evening?
I'm good. I sent an email.
Okay, all right. I didn't know. I thought Mr. Lefebvre was coming. Okay.
He sent me an email, too.
Okay, he did, but I thought he was going to speak to you. Okay, all right. With that, I have one speaker form, and that is myself, Sarah Countryman, 396 Berkeley Drive. Good evening, Council. On October 23rd, a press release via sprawltag.com regarding a new Jack-in-the-Box coming to Montgomery was a shock, quite a shock. The article stated that Jack-in-the-Box would be starting construction next month, January 2025, and located at the southeast corner of 149 and 105. As you can imagine, and may have experienced yourself, my phone started ringing with feedback, concerns, and questions that were all rolling in. After some due diligence, I found out that the future owners of this Jack-in-the-Box had been communicating and working with our city engineers for over a year. Then out of the blue, escrow money for a feasibility study was turned into City Hall, and this item is before you tonight. It has come to me as a surprise and a disappointment that our city engineers, WGA, and staff, who are no longer employed, had been working with this group and had knowledge of this project, but yet never workshopped, discussed, disclosed, or volunteered any information about the project. I have in front of me a map from our October 22nd, 2024 council meeting where the engineers point out ongoing projects and proposed projects on a map, and this item, as well as the 32-acre tract project, are not listed. Again, no mention of effort to inform and disclose to council potential business and/or development coming our way in the very near future or being worked on at that present time. It seems to me that WGA has lost their way and no longer value the taxpayer and citizens of Montgomery. I find it difficult to call our relationship a true partnership, and I personally have been feeling this way for some time. It's been my desire that WGA and the city of Montgomery begin to truly partner or part ways, and WGA remember who they serve. It isn't themselves, or it's not supposed to be, or city staff. It truly is the taxpayer. Surprises like this and others I've experienced lately aren't appreciated and shouldn't be accepted. Thank you, Sarah Countryman. P.S., on a different note, I have two other things. One, this past weekend was Light Up the Park. It was extreme success, all in part due to Stephanie Johnson, Ruby Bevan, and Ms. Tilly, and all of PD. Shop with the Cop was a huge success, and Light Up the Park was as well. So I just want to recognize everyone for that. It was awesome, and this weekend is a big weekend in the city with the parade. Secondly, Matt Hill at the library has asked that, I make, Matt Wilson, oh, sorry, that Thursday from 4:00 to 6:00, December 12th, is the Christmas Tree Silent Auction, and you can bid for a tree, and they'll have like 21 trees. And I had, he's asked that I remind council, you are invited, and staff, you are invited as well. All right. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda. Number one, consideration of possible action on our regular meeting minutes of November 12th, 2024. Two, consideration of possible action on renewal of the annual permit for Cedar Crest Mobile Home Park. Three, consideration of possible action on a resolution of the City Council of the City of Montgomery, Texas, authorizing and participating of the City of Montgomery, Texas, in the Kroger-Texas Settlement Agreement, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to participate in the settlement. Four, consideration of possible action on a resolution of the City Council of the City of Montgomery, Texas, adopting the preventive applications and prohibited technology policy to satisfy the requirements of Senate Bill 1893. Five, consideration of possible action on the following resolution. A resolution of the City of Montgomery, Texas, affirming its annual review of the policy for investment of municipal funds and investment strategies contained therein, has been conducted as required by Section 2256.05E of the Texas Government Code. Six, consideration of possible action on a resolution of the City Council of the City of Montgomery, Texas, authorizing the signers for all City of Montgomery banking accounts with First Financial Bank and providing an effective date. Seven, consideration of possible action authorizing this police department to sell a front partition from a 2016 Chevy Tahoe to Emerge Services LLC for $200. Eight, consideration of possible action authorizing the police department to dispose of an old speed trailer. Nine, consideration of possible action authorizing the police department to sell unused equipment to Navasota PD Police Department for $200. Council, you can take these cumulatively or individually. What is your pleasure?
I would like to move item number six to the end of the meeting after executive session, if I can.
I would like to ask about item number two, a question.
You have the floor.
But it was for Ms. Tilly particularly. Ms. Tilly, on number two, about the existing non-conforming Chapter 54 in our Code of Ordinances. So can you do any kind of inspections whatsoever in that part?
We can do an inspection as you requested, or the likely, there will probably be one of the ordinance actions, that's what you're looking for. But are you looking for a condition that's existing next year?
Well, like, when you go around the corner, but they've taken one down, and all the trash and stuff is still sitting there. I was just wondering how that's being addressed.
I can follow up.
Okay, thank you.
So, Ms. Tilly, we'll take that down to, once we get out of executive session, then we will come back to that item. So, Council, is there any questions of one through five and seven through nine?
No.
How, entertain a motion?
I make a motion to approve items one through five and seven through nine as presented in the consent agenda.
I'll second. Move by Casey, and so toss-up between Carol and Stan. Who seconded? There's been a motion to accept item one through five and seven through nine. This motion's debatable and amendable and requires majority vote. It is open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting one through five and seven through nine on the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept item one through five and seven through nine on the consent agenda as presented.
So our legal representative isn't here, but as a point of order, I think we have to vote to accept item six down in the order of the agenda.
Ruby, do we need to vote to move six to the end of the agenda? I didn't think so. Yeah.
Since it's, even though it's in the order?
No, we just have to read it again when we get ready to take action on it.
Okay.
Because there he is. Next item on your agenda is a public forum. City Council will receive comments from the public on the below-listed items. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Persons wishing to participate and speak during the public hearing portion of the meeting must sign in to participate prior to the meeting being called to order. Ten, on your agenda, conduct a public hearing on the reauthorization of building permit fees for residential and commercial construction. At this time, I don't have anyone that has signed up to speak. Is there anyone present?
So this is?
All right, we open the forum at 6:10, and, did you have a question? And we will close this public hearing at 6:10 as well. Moving on to the regular agenda, item number 11, consideration of public, of possible action on ordinance of the City Council of the City of Montgomery, Texas, reauthorizing building permit fees for residential and commercial construction.
So we had talked about doing some changes to our, our building fee permits before December or something. Does this have to do with that?
This is a Rick or a Tilly or a Ruby?
By December.
Say again?
There was something brought up here two meetings ago, three meetings ago, about we had to have certain things, changes made by it.
Last year.
So House Bill 1922, back in the 88th legislative session, was a bill that provided that if you did not have a public hearing and adopted building permit fees, within 10 years, you could no longer assess them. So most of the cities started trying to have those public hearings and adopt them. So what I propose is that we don't increase or change the fees at all. About five or six years ago, the legislature passed a bill that you couldn't charge permit fees on residential construction based on valuation, which that's the way the codes are set up, and all the other states do it that way, but now Texas doesn't. So we sat down and went through and developed a per-square-foot basis and ranges of 500 square foot, which has worked out real well, I think, because now the builders know if they're building a house between 2,500 and 3,000 square foot, the fee is $2,099, and they just write a check for that now. So that's been the only change that we've had, and since I started doing inspections 20 years ago, we're still using the same fee schedule. The difference is it's based on valuation, so as values of construction have gone up, our fees have been able to go up. So all this is basically is a housekeeping procedure, that we have to have a public hearing, and the council has to adopt an ordinance with the fees, and then what's recommended at the building officials conferences, that every time you adopt a new code, you should update your fee schedule. So the main thing, keep in mind, we're not changing the fees, increasing. The only, one change that I would suggest is on commercial projects, particularly like on build-outs, where the, they're a strip center, and all they're doing is building in some walls and putting some stuff in. You know, their valuation is sometimes $35,000 or $50,000. It doesn't generate enough, when you do the valuation on it, it generates like $300 permit fees. That doesn't cover the inspections and plan review. So what I've recommended is a $300 base fee for any permit other than residential to help, you know, kind of fill in that difference. But otherwise, we're still going to use the same charts that we've had for 20 years.
Right, so that recommendation base, is that a change to our current?
Yes.
That recommended base, is that a change to our current?
That would be in addition to, we have not been collecting any kind of base fee. So that's what kind of hit us, is somebody comes in and only says it's a $40,000 build-out, we generate about $240 in the permit fee, and you have four inspections, and then you cover the inspection fee.
Yeah, so the base fee of $300, Rick, is just for commercial?
Right.
Right. Yeah, it's already, we already have a base fee built into the residential.
Anything other than residential.
Basically, that's the money to kind of subsidize the cost of the building apartment.
Now, is that covered in section, in agenda item 12, then?
No, no, that's in, that's in.
That's in, that's in 11. Okay, so when we make a change to our fees, don't we have to post that?
You've not necessarily noticed this already, and so we didn't go until we got.
So that was the public hearing, the hear, the feedback from?
Right, I'm looking on that, yeah. Okay.
And it was posted. Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
A G.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Rick, thank you for being diligent and making sure that we get this done and right under the timeline.
Slip through the cracks.
I make a motion to accept item, agenda item 11 as presented?
Second. Moved by Casey, seconded by Cheryl, that we accept item number 11 as presented. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting item number 11 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept item number 11 as presented. Item number 12 on your agenda, consideration of possible action on an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Montgomery, Texas, amending Chapter 18, Building and Building Regulations of the City's Code of Ordinances by repealing the existing sections 18 through 21 and 18 through 27, and adopting a new section, 18 through 21, for the purpose of updating the city's building codes, providing a severance clause, and a Texas Open Meetings Act clause, and providing for an effective date.
And I apologize.
You're okay.
I can't read. I tried to. My computer's dead, folks. It's been dead for a few days. I can't get it to turn on.
If you wanted to look. Did you have something to add, or did you hear that answer questions? Okay.
You okay, Cici, right?
No, because I would have had, I've been able to read it. It's hard to read it all on the phone.
Mainly housekeeping.
We've been on the 2018 co-edition, 2017, I need to see. The state agencies of regulating trades have adopted newer codes. The main thing that I was concerned about is our ICO, ISO ratings.
Right.
And if you don't adopt, or set currently codes, that hurts your ratings. So once we get this adopted, I'll get back to the ISO, folks, and see if we can do a re-rating process.
Thank you for that. Appreciate you having our back.
I make a motion that we accept item 12 as presented.
Motion by Cheryl.
Second.
Seconded by Stan, that we accept item number 12 as presented. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting item number 12 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept item number 12 as presented. Item number 13 on your agenda, consideration of possible action regarding an escrow agreement by and between the City of Montgomery, Texas, and KHR Properties Development Number 2414, and authorizing the city engineer to prepare a feasibility study for a proposed 0.76-acre Jack-in-the-Box.
I make a motion that we table this.
Motion by Cheryl.
I'll second.
Seconded by Stan, that we motion that we table item number 13 as presented. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of tabling item number 13 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Are you an a or a nay? Casey, I couldn't hear you, sorry.
I'm with Cheryl. I'm with Cheryl, I'm sorry.
Okay, so then I would be, that's two, with Stan and Cheryl, Casey and Carol, or a yay? A nay, sorry, a nay.
They're the ays, they're the ays, yeah.
So I would be the dividing vote, or deciding vote, and I'm a, I'm a yes to table.
And we're tabling it till when?
Till next meeting.
Next meeting, which is?
January.
January 25.
Sorry, when, Stan?
Let me look it up.
I think it's the 7.
The 12?
14th of January, 2025.
Yep, 14th, yeah. That's the first.
Oh, 7th, yes, about it.
So January 14th, 2025. Okay. All right. Item number 14 is presented, consideration of possible action regarding an escrow agreement by and between the City of Montgomery, Texas, and BCS Capital Development Number 2415, and authorizing the city engineer to prepare a feasibility study for a proposed 32-acre development. All right, Chris?
All right, in your packets, we see a copy of the development application, sorry, one of the five of the packet, followed by an exhibit showing the rough layout of the property. This is the property behind Ransoms that extends all along Buffalo Springs, C.B. Stewart, it has provided down on 105. The proposed development, which there is not a lay plan in here, is a mixed use, so they have a mixture of retail, multifamily, and restaurant space was the initial concept of the package. So what this item is for you tonight is authorizing the escrow unit, which enters the developer in terms of the city, fund the cost of plan reviews, city administrator time, et cetera, and authorize us to begin the feasibility study to lay out the required improvements, zoning, capacity, et cetera, related to the property.
And the multifamily would be?
I don't know if we have that level of.
As far as where, or what style?
Where?
It would be closer to the hardcore of C.B. Stewart and Buffalo Springs, the northern portion of the property, what they're proposing at this time, and they're proposing garden-style apartments.
What is garden-style?
As opposed to just being one large building with multiple units inside, it's, I guess, your more traditional apartment style, where you have a building A, building B, community units inside each.
Yes.
Sure.
Good evening, Jonathan White, it's all spread and sharing. Developers couldn't make it here tonight, so I came here to represent them. So it is BCS Capital will be proposing this development. They do intend to come in, and it's not to be able to provide you a presentation with a little bit more details of the apartments and kind of restaurants and QSRs and retail development. They'd like to be able to propose for this development. They just didn't have some time to be able to put a lot of that material in, you know, short contract time. Really interested in making sure that, capacity-wise, utility-wise, we can make some headway on that, while we can then come in and also present that to you all to make sure it's the development that you'd be looking for. But I think y'all were trying to get it into January for the feasibility study, and so I think that meeting, we would like to present before, present the type of development they would like to propose to you guys, and then we follow up the feasibility study that they would present, and, you know, ultimately accept, and see if that's something the city would want before.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand that. So before they do the feasibility, they're going to bring us a, some type of?
They're going to work on the feasibility study as we're working on the marketing material. So we've given them, you know, kind of acreage of what we think the apartments would look like, total amount of units. It's going to be like, this category was really garden-style, class A-style apartments, something like 20 units per acre. So, you know, three, four story, probably three-story, really, class A apartments are the best example.
But it will front on 105, correct?
No, it'll be on the north side.
On the far side, okay.
Yes.
Probably the apartments are.
Yeah, the front side will probably be, it's in front of Kroger or the shops development, so you'd have retail, QSR style development on the front, probably something in the middle. They were thinking about like a restaurant row, you know, potentially just one lane, and then apartments in the very back, I guess.
Across from where the church is going? It would be more?
Yeah, maybe a little bit further.
Soccer field, or whatever it was at that time.
Yeah, where the soccer field is.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yes. Our goal was just to be able to have the feasibility study worked on while we're getting the kind of work.
Should we have done like a workshop first and then do a feasibility study? I feel like we're kind of getting rushed here.
So the process we had in mind was we'll do a pre-development called with the developer, go over high level, which is done at the staff level, and then the next was the escrow data and the feasibility. There have been developers in the past that have done kind of the presentation first.
Yes, that's what we're accustomed to.
This one was, as Jonathan said, more of a timing thing. They don't have their presentation together, they have all the details to present, but they wanted the feasibility study to get started, so at least they have that piece while they're pulling their presentation together.
May I add something?
Yes, please.
This is, they have under contract with us, and we've given them a short window. From our standpoint, it's either a go or no go, and so we've encouraged them to meet with the city, do their presentation, kind of work things in parallel. So they have engaged Jonathan, I've just been talking to Chris, but, you know, they have a very brief, they have 90 days. So it's a go-no-go. We do not intend to extend beyond that, and so that is what they're trying to do, is to work things in parallel.
So Alan, based on, based on what we want to do with Keen, Keen, uh?
KKC.
Keen, yeah, KKC, excuse me. Where would this fall with the ordinance we already passed with old ordinance versus new ordinance? Since we don't have a development agreement yet.
So I have to look at the timing. Have they filed an application?
Yes, they've given this group. Yeah.
So.
It doesn't matter.
Their grandfather did.
Just without going through the feasibility study, we know there's going to be likely a special use permit, because this is zoned commercial, I believe, for the majority of the property, which wouldn't allow the residents to own. So there's likely going to be some type of special use permit and/or development agreement associated with this to allow those uses in or rezoned, based on what you have today.
I make a motion we accept item 14 as presented.
I second.
Been moved by Stan, seconded by Casey, that we accept item number 14 as presented. This motion's debatable, amendable, and requires majority vote. It is open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting item number 14 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept item number 14 as presented. Item number 15 on your agenda, consideration of possible action on the request for qualifications for building inspection and plan review services.
Mayor and Council, in September, we sent out an RAQ for inspector and review of services. At this time, we're in a contract with Mr. Hannah. So when we plan into the new contract, those agendas just came in last week, so we're recommended to take no action.
Agreed.
I make a motion we accept no action on this item.
We take no action.
Because if we do no action, then?
All right, motion, sorry?
So we don't need a motion, right?
No, we do, but your, but your motion is to take no action on this, meaning that we're not going to continue with?
That's what you said.
Yes.
Okay, sorry, that's, okay, sorry, I thought you said something different. I apologize.
That's okay.
Okay, moved by Stan, seconded by Cheryl, that we take no action on this item number 13. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It's open for discussion.
I think it's 15.
Word number 15.
15, sorry. I apologize, number 15 on your agenda?
Okay.
All those in favor of accepting item number 15 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
We're not accepting it as presented.
Sorry, I apologize. Well, I thought this is, that we take no action was the recommendation, so.
No, this is the consideration of possible action. His recommendation is to take no action.
So on item number 15, to take no action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, we will take no action on item number 15. Here we go. I was reading the recommendation, I apologize.
Tell them, yeah.
Okay, item number 16, consideration of possible action revisions to Rick Hanna, CBO Partners LLC's service agreement to include the title, duties, and responsibilities of building official.
Mayor and Council, as we spoke about, the revision in contract with Mr. Hannah begins January 1st of '25. There's two changes in that, in that contract. One is the 3D4 system, that's the software, which we use for the permits and inspection and all those other things that has to go along with that. That software has been split amongst cities. Our portion is $3,000. And also bringing Mr. Hannah on as a building official, that pays $3,000 monthly to be invoiced on 15th, the last day of each month.
I make a motion to approve the revisions to Rick Hanna, CBO Partners LLC's service agreement to include the title, duties, and responsibilities of City of Montgomery Building Official.
I second.
It's been moved by Carol, seconded by Casey, that we approve the revisions to Rick Hanna, CBO Partners LLC's service agreement to include the titles, duties, and responsibilities of the City of Montgomery as building official. This motion's debatable, amendable, and requires majority vote. It is open for discussion. It is open for discussion.
Thank you, Rick.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Uphill battle, but good job. All those in favor of accepting and approving the revisions to Rick Hanna, CBO Partners LLC's service agreement to include the title, duties, and responsibilities for the City of Montgomery of building official, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will approve the revisions to Rick Hanna, CBO Partners LLC's service agreement to include the titles, duties, responsibilities of City of Montgomery Building Official. All right, item number, um, 17. Consideration of possible action on an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Montgomery, accepting and approving an annual update to the service and assessment plan and assessment role for City of Montgomery Public Improvement District Number 1, providing for payment of the annual installment of the assessments in accordance with the Chapter 372 Texas Local Government Code, as amended, and providing for severability, providing for effective date.
Mayor and Council, this is an annual housekeeping item, and we have a representative from Coats Rose here this evening to talk to you a little bit more about this PIT process.
Great.
Good evening, Council. My name is Hisham Chali, I'm attorney over at Coats Rose. I appreciate your time for allowing me to speak today. I'm not sure how familiar you guys are with PITS. This PIT has been around since 2015. And so every year at this time, as you know, we update the taxes. All we're doing is updating the tax to show that it's the 2024 tax roll for the PIT assessment that's already been levied on the property within the public improvement district. So that's really the only change in the update. This is something that we do, like she said, a housekeeping item every year. But I'm happy to answer any questions on the legal side, as well as development side. The developer is here as well to ensure that if you guys have any questions, they're duly answered.
This is golden. We appreciate you showing up, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
I make a motion, we accept agenda, agenda item number 17 as presented.
Moved by Stan.
I second.
Seconded by Casey to accept item number 17 as presented. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting item number 17 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept item number 17 as presented. Item number 18 on your agenda. Consideration of possible action on the certificate of substantial completion for the 2023 sanitary sewer PH2 project and commencement of the one-year warranty period.
Good evening, Council. This item is for is the sanitary sewer rehab Phase 2 project, which was the project that replaced the sewer line directly outside of City Hall, across 105 and ended at the back of the houses along Shepherd Street. Remember, this project was broken too. There was one larger project that did everything that was non-Tex-OT. This project was the Tex-OT-only portion, and it required a new steel casing because we're enlarging that line underneath the road. That project has been completed. We have done our inspection, we received post-rehab videos showing the line is in good condition. And so we do recommend accepting the project and entering into the one-year warranty period, which would begin December 3rd of 2024. And what this does is that near, as we get near the one-year warranty period, 2025, we'll have a re-inspection with the contractor to make sure there's been no surface improvement or anything that has changed since that would require repairs to be done at their cost as part of their performance.
I make a motion to accept item 18 as presented.
Motion by Casey.
Second.
Carol?
Seconded by Carol. To accept item number 18 as presented. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting item number 18 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept item number 18 as presented. Number 19 on your agenda. Consideration of possible action on a resolution at the City Council of the City of Montgomery, Texas, authorizing the interim city administrator to enter into an agreement with the City of Montgomery Public Works Department to utilize the City of Montgomery American Rescue Plan funds, providing for findings of fact, repealer, severability, effective date, proper notice, and meeting.
All right, Mayor and Council, this is that item we've been talking about to be able to allow us to use our appraisal funds. Based on timing, we are not able to actually have these projects obligated by the deadline of December 31st of this year. So based on the guidance that Grantworks has received from Treasury, the city can enter into an MOU with itself to obligate these funds, and that's what we're doing with this MOU this evening.
Okay. So we can ultimately still use them for the projects?
Right, so the projects that we brought to you last month, the College Street drainage improvements and the water plant number three booster pump addition, those are the two projects that are included in this MOU.
Awesome. I make a motion to accept item 19 as presented.
Motion by Casey. Seconded by Cheryl to accept item number 19 as presented. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting item number 19 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept item number 19 as presented. Number 20 on your agenda. Consideration of possible action on a resolution of the City Council of the City of Montgomery, Texas, adopting the American Rescue Plan Act, state and local fiscal recovery fund, funding financial management policies and procedures.
All right, this was that other item I mentioned last month that would be coming forward. Based on the guidance from Grantworks, this is the financial policy piece that we need in place in order to cover us for all of the, all things federal. Legal has reviewed it, and this, that's what's in front of you this evening.
I make a motion that we accept item number 20 as presented.
Motion by Cheryl.
Second.
Seconded by Casey to accept item number 20 as presented. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All those in favor of accepting item number 20 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept item number 20 as presented. Mary Ann. Item number 21. Consideration of possible action on a resolution of the City Council of the City of Montgomery, Texas, submitting nominee, nominees as candidate, candidates for the election of the Montgomery Central Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Any volunteers?
Sure.
I nominate Casey.
Sure.
All right, nominate Casey. Is there any other nominations? All right, all those in favor of nominating, oh, is there a second?
Somebody wants a second?
All right, seconded by Carol. All those in favor of nominating Casey Olson for the nominee, for candidate for the election of the Montgomery Central Appraisal District Board of Directors, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will nominate Casey Olson for the election of Montgomery City Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. Item number 22 on your agenda. Consideration of possible action to authorize staff to enroll in the AT&amp;T FirstNet plan and to discontinue employee telephone reimbursement.
Mayor and Council, in line with Spent Bill, 1893, social media, TikTok, and some other social media applications. We looked at our phone services, and we're going to have a service change. We started looking at the amount that we were paying for these stipendments for phones. It was about $19,800. FirstNet will save us about $9,000. We want to get all staff into the FirstNet phone.
Good, this is something I've been wanting to do for a while.
All right.
How much did you say it would save, chief? $9,000? And do we have to make a new policy for the phones because they're city-owned now? Or do you already have a policy from years ago?
We've gotten a new policy for the TikTok. That will serve as a policy for our phone services. We'll take a look at it and see if we need to enhance that some more. And we also changed our social media supply to also go in with Spent Bill 1893. We made the necessary changes, but we'll take a look when we start to get the phone.
Thank you.
Chief, is, I thought there was consideration for elected and boards for the city? Is because we are on our personal phones, or is that still up for consideration, or no?
I understand.
I thought, so to hand out phones, city-owned phones to board commissions and electeds? I know that was discussed, or Ruby, we talked about it, I believe, I thought.
We can issue these FirstNet phones to council and board commission members if they would like to choose to use them. But there won't be any stipendments if you choose to use your own, and your own will be subject to First, over records requests.
Right. But it is, we don't, if we use our personal, we cannot, should not, shall not have TikTok on it, correct?
If you use your personal and you also use your personal for the city business, then that is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, if you use your personal just for personal, it's not for city business, then you're free to have whatever you want.
But we'll also, once you come into this building, we're going to have a service where you won't be able to pick those things up.
As soon as, as soon as that came out, I remember all TikTok.
My daughter wants me to have it, I could care less. This helps me out.
Someone had to show me how to do it. So I don't have anything to do with it. I'm good.
Cool. I make a motion to accept item 22 as presented.
Motion by Casey, seconded by Stan, that we accept item number 22 as presented. All those in favor of accepting item number 22 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we'll accept item 22 as presented. Item number 23. Departmental report status update.
Mayor and Council, we're going to presume post reports, January. One of those will be the end of the year report. But with all the things that we need to get on this agenda, I would thought we could back that up for January.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Yep, thank you. All right, great. All right, next on the agenda is council inquiry. Anybody have anything? Okay.
Just don't forget about the parade this weekend. Everybody show up.
All right, and then moving right along to executive session. With respect to any subject matter listed on this agenda, the City Council may meet in closed executive session if and to the extent allowed by Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including but not limited to any of the following sections of Chapter 551, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, Section 551.072, deliberation about real property, Section 551.073, deliberation regarding prospective gifts, Section 551.074, personnel matters, 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, and 551.089, deliberation regarding security devices or security audits. It is 6:43?
It's 12:00.
Oh, I'm sorry, closed session.
Page.
Oh. Okay, sorry. City Council will meet in closed session pursuant to the provisions of 551 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in. Section 551.071, consultation with attorney to seek or receive legal advice regarding pending litigation. 551.074, personnel matters, chief of police and interim city administrator. 551.074, personnel matters, assistant city administrator and city secretary. 551.074, personnel matters, code enforcement and planning and development administrator. And 551.074, personnel matters, public officer Casey Olson. It is 6:44, and we will head into executive session. Thank you.
It is 8:13 and we are back for executive session. We are back in. So I'll entertain action from executive session.
I'd like to make a motion to, excuse me, approve the, excuse me, increase the compensation to the chief of police for $20,000 for additional duties as interim city administrator to be effective December 10, 2024.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the compensation increase of $20,000 to the chief of police for additional duties as interim city administrator to be effective for the pay period starting December 10, 2024. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we approve compensation increase of $20,000 to the chief of police for additional duties as interim city administrator to be effective for pay period starting December 10, 2024. Is there another motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve a compensation increase of $8,500 to reconstruct the code enforcement and planning and development director position into a dual role, adopt a job description for code enforcement, planning and development administrator and to be effective as today, December the 10.
I second that.
It's been moved by Carol, seconded by Cheryl, that we approve compensation increase of $8,500 to restructure the code enforcement and planning and development director positions into a dual role, adopt a job description for code enforcement, planning and development administrator and to be effective for the pay period starting December 10, 2024. This motion is debatable, amendable and requires a majority vote. It is open for discussion. All those in favor of the item as presented say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we will accept the item as presented. Next item, we are going back to item number six that was on the agenda and I will read it out. Wow. Sorry. Here it is. Consideration of possible action on a resolution of the city council of the city of Montgomery, Texas authorizing the signers for all city of Montgomery banking accounts with First Financial Bank and providing an effective date.
I will make the motion to approve the resolution with the correction of the city secretary's position authorizing the signers for all city of Montgomery banking accounts with First Financial Bank and providing an effective date.
So I want to make, to make sure we understand the correction is that we're removing the assistant.
No, just, yeah, the assistant.
Assistant city administrator.
City administrator from that line item.
Yeah, we need to make sure we clarify that.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, moved by Carol.
Seconded.
Seconded by Cheryl, that we accept the resolution, the city council of the city of Montgomery, Texas authorizing the signers for all city of Montgomery banking accounts with First Financial Bank and providing an effective date with the correction of.
The removal.
The removal of the city, assistant city administrative position on that list. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote, it's open for discussion. All those in favor of item number six as presented with the correction of removing the assistant city administrator position, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries.
I have a question to adjourn the meeting.
Before we adjourn, I'd like to make a public statement. So last meeting, in my comments, in my tone, had been construed that I insinuated that there was collusion or malfeasance or, I don't know what the other word is, with other council members. And my tone or my word choice was incorrect. A lot of information has come to light that I should have been aware of as I was in the meetings and it was explained to me that yes, I was aware of these things and that is my mistake and I apologize to all council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I accept your apology.
I do too.
Same. Thank you. All right, with that.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion by Cheryl.
Seconded.
Seconded by Casey that we adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, 8:18, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, I thought we'd be here till 10:30.
When I got the agenda.